Hello, welcome to the first ever episode, I believe, of Tech Bros Show where we have not just Lauren and me at the top, but also our guest. We're starting straight into Ethan because I'm going to get straight to him. And we could say, set a precedent that when it's your second time on Tech Bros, you get to start the show with us because I think you're also the first person who's been on twice. So, welcome.
I love it.
We're going to dive straight into the topic. You can, you only have 30 minutes to give us. We're going to go straight into the topic, which is basically the topic of Lauren's Medium blog. I assigned everyone the homework of reading it. But for those of you who didn't, Lauren, give us a 60-second summary of your blog published yesterday.
Oh, I'm just having fun and laughing at some of the nonsense going on out here. So what we're talking about today is, right, like, what are data teams, data tools, databases, data warehouse, BI tools, whatever? What is the role of all this in finance? And, you know, when we say finance, we mean a couple of things. We can mean FPNA, strategic finance. We can mean accounting, right? Like how you actually figure out how to pay your taxes and, you know, what goes on the books, things like that. And, you know, I've seen this for years. Recently, there's a whole, I call it, you know, this charge forward of just vendors who want, you know, these finance workloads. There's a lot of confusion out there. Because we all know, I think, like, a lot of large vendors with gigantic marketing budgets tend to run the narrative. I always, I don't think that's right. And I think, you know, a lot of companies are heading towards disaster right now with some of the stuff they're doing with finance, accounting, et cetera. And, you know, we have Ethan on here. So a couple of years ago, when Ethan and I, because Ethan and I both live in New York and we've both been heads of data and stuff before, you know, he runs Portable. I think everybody on LinkedIn probably knows him or knows of him. But on our first meeting, first time we ever met Ethan, we were talking about financial reconciliation in like data warehouses and stuff. I was pulling my hair out and you were telling me about like, you know, a time you had to try that. So I'll give it up to you, like, you know, this is our origin story and that's kind of how we bonded and became friends, I guess. The first time, the first time we'd ever talked for a while. So I'll give it over to you. Like, what do you, what do you make of all this? And, uh, and where are you at? And for our viewers, like, we'll open up the floor probably in 15 minutes, 20 minutes or so. And, uh, you know, have an open discussion about finance and data teams. Yeah, go ahead, Ethan. I'm done rambling.
So, so this is something I typically don't think about a lot. The reason why, so like, I posted about it once earlier this week. And then I actually posted about something similar today. Was it today? The time flies by. Today, in terms of like, if you are working on a process like the month-end close process, like, that has to be perfect and has to be fast. So it's one of the, like, and the reason why this is top of mind for me is one of our clients reached out and was like, hey, like, I just, I just started thinking through, what are the top priorities for the business? And the company said, and this is a data person, and they, they said, hey, like, leadership is like financial reporting. And the data person was like, maybe I should take that on, maybe I shouldn't, doesn't seem that fun, but like, it's a top priority. What do I do? And like, my just blunt answer was do not do it. Just like, if you are not, so like, so that's like, to most data people, if you are a data person and someone comes and says, like, you should be thinking about, like, here, like, can you do our month-end close process? Can you help with accounting? Can you take all these spreadsheets and get a mirror image of them with, by stringing together a ton of SQL? I would just say no, is my high-level answer. The one step behind that, I think the big thing is just like, so when I posted about this earlier this week, there were some people, whether they're consultants or financing, like execs, that know data and also are finance people, where they're like, hey, but like, that's exactly, that's what we do. And if you are one of those people and like, your full-time job is finance and you just happen to be using technology to do it, that's amazing. That's a more efficient way of doing finance. Like, that's cool. If you are a data person and you're being pulled in the direction of accounting and things that, like, in the finance world, direct, where the scenarios where directional is not an acceptable answer, it's a, it's a very high-value but unbelievably high-effort project to take on. And in most scenarios, that ends extremely poorly. I wish I had the Reddit thread. There was a Reddit thread of this. I don't know if you remember that, Lauren Mary, maybe a year ago, where a data team, it was like a massive.
I remember that. I remember that. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
There was a massive investment. They invested in like this entire team. They worked on it for a year. And then at the end of the day, like, the data, the data person was just like, very, very upset because their boss or the person running this project told them they failed. Literally told them like, you did not accomplish what you were supposed to accomplish. Like, we're considering like firing your entire team. And some, a lot of data people associate with the data person being like, but they got really close. It was really close. I personally associated with the finance person because like, close isn't good enough in accounting. Like, in this scenario, like, close doesn't work. And I think you need to understand that when you take these projects on. Otherwise, you're going to end up in that, it's very easy to end up in that scenario where you think close is good enough and, and you realize nine months later that it's not, and everything, everything fails.
Ethan and Lauren, you're both super opinionated on this, obviously. Yeah, just stepping back slightly, where did this come from? Like, why is this effort to reinvent the wheel? You know, there's again, software that does, and accounting and finance are not new processes. If anything, they're like the oldest processes in history, probably, right?
Right. So here's, here's where I think a lot of the problem comes from. I've seen this with work that I've taken on. I don't take, I don't take on these projects anymore and I steer myself away from them on purpose. Just, you know, with how I want to run my business. But, um, you know, had an experience with a crypto company where I was like, all right, well, you know, y'all are probably going to jail and I'm not putting my name anywhere near this. But, you know, you know, 2021 was a fun time. Uh, and, uh, you know, they wanted to pay me in their coin and everything. That's a different story for a different day. Um, I've seen this plenty of times before where the finance team is literally getting a Tableau dashboard that's just a sheet. I've also seen like a Looker dashboard, right? And if people are super Looker users or have used it before, like, all right, well, there's 3,000 line items and every row is a line item. And there's 4,000. And Looker actually caps out at 5,000. And so one, someone, this person I worked with before as a customer was like, oh, like, we can't figure any of this out. Like, we're only getting 5,000 line items, like, in and out of the system. And I looked at it and I was like, oh, well, that's a constraint of Looker because Looker is a business intelligence tool. They're like, yeah, you know, we're, we're, we're two months behind on, uh, like, we owe a bunch of taxes or whatever. I'm getting feedback from somebody. But, uh, I'm like, all right, well, you didn't design the system, right? We should not be pulling all this stuff from Postgres into Snowflake, putting it in Looker, and then downloading it, uh, and then putting that in NetSuite. Probably not the right way to do this. We should be putting it in NetSuite. That should be the place where, you know, all the data should be correct and you should be able to pay taxes. Based on that information, you should be able to run your business from there. And then if you want to bring it over for analytics, then we do that. And that's what I see pretty common. And I think that a lot of this, like, is due to the fact that you can get like AWS credits or Google Cloud credits. You know, 100,000 or I think right now it's 100,000 for two years. And what does everybody like, like to do with that? Well, a lot of companies, they like to buy data stacks because they're free. And an ERP system is not. Uh, and so you can kind of start, you know, putting the spreadsheets and dashboards together with this data stack when you, with your, you know, two years of free cloud credits, but then you scale up and, you know, now your accounting team's pulling data out of, uh, out of a 5,000-row Looker data dump and stuff like that.
I have like slightly different, so like, taking a step. So I think in some of the comments in here hitting on this as well, where it's like, staying away entirely from anything that resembles financial data is not the, is not the problem here. Like, there is, if you're coming up with like directionally, how much revenue you have, like, and as, as long as the expectations are set, that's what's happening. Like, hey, I just want to know as the seat, like, I have a chart in our KPI dash. It's like, how much revenue do we have? It's not what we use for accounting. It's not what we use for bookkeeping. It's what I just use to directionally understand our business. As the person creating the dashboard and the person using it, you have to understand that that's what's happening here because these things can very quickly turn into things that then get reported, which then you, then you've actually signed up for something that you didn't realize you had signed up for and it's very difficult to undo. But if you think, if you think about this, married back to your original question, why is this a thing? Like, why, why is, why are people ending up here? It's like, it's just like any other part of the organization. You have a business and the business has business units. And up until recently, they didn't use data to solve problems. They didn't use their data stack to solve problems. You had marketing, you had HR, you had finance, you had engineering product, and they all used their own stuff. Some of it was spreadsheet, some of it was business applications. Data teams come in and it's like, cool, we have these amazing tools and we understand technology, which is an asset in any part of the business. And they're going in being like, can I help you? Can I help you? Can I help you? Can I help you? And they start with one of the highest value initiatives for marketers. In a lot of cases, if you're spending money on ads, it's allocation of ad spend. If you're a B to C company or a big enterprise, it's single customer view. Same thing on the HR side. It's like, understand your employees, who should you be paying, who should you be letting go, et cetera. In finance, most of the, like, when you think about finance, there's accounting, there's strategic planning, there's like FPNA, which is financial planning analytics, there's budgeting, all these things. And for them, a lot of it's like the painful aspects of like dotting the i's and crossing the t's. So like, if you go to all these teams and you say, what's your biggest problem? It's one of the biggest problems. Like, there are, there are teams for this. They have applications. The problem that I think most data teams are overlooking when they do this exercise, and this is worthwhile exercise to go to your company and ask every executive what their biggest problems are. I'm not saying don't do that. Ask the CFO. The problem is you do that and then that you don't realize the levels of complexity involved in actually accomplishing these tasks. So like allocating ad spend for marketing teams, like, you can do that pretty quickly. And if you mess it up, it's like not the end of the world in, like, for most companies. Hiring and applicant tracking, things like that. There's some things in that world you cannot mess up, things like biases and, and like equality and things of that sort. But other aspects of it, like, what skills do you include on a job description are more directional. In the finance world, I think a lot of data teams look at it just like they look at the ad spend problem. And they're like, oh, yeah, like, this is, the ad spend problem was just one spreadsheet. You have 20 spreadsheets? That's 20 times as big of a problem. And what they don't realize is it's not just the output of those spreadsheets that matters. Like, you actually, someone has to be able to go in and understand step by step what happened, not just inside the organization, but outside the organization. And when you do it with SQL, not only is it, is it a nightmare relative to actually doing this stuff in an application like a NetSuite or QuickBooks or something, or in spreadsheets, but it's also, it also becomes a black box. Like, you can't see what's happening in these things, which in itself is another fundamental problem. And I think that, that causes a lot of friction in these scenarios where it's like, even if you get to the exact output that you are getting to from the spreadsheets, if only one person inside the company understands how raw data got converted through 1,000 SQL models into an output, that is just as scary as, but that's scarier than.
You're, you're replacing a pivot table and a V lookup and whatever with a SQL join, right? I mean, come on, you're doing it here in the day, right? Like.
Yeah, but, but like within, like, auditors aren't going to be able to audit, audit that. Like, like, so, so it's one of those things where I think the additional cost, like, like, at face value, it makes so much sense. It's like, take this stuff that's manual and put it into automated technology. But most data teams assume everyone else understands their queries and the, the way they've structured things and can, and like, no one can. And either your full-time job now just became, become a financial analyst, just do it in SQL. And that, like, if you want to do that, I'm, I'm not saying don't do it. I'm saying like, it's a different career. Like, like, if, if you're doing this, like, back to David's point, like, you go get a CPA. But it's like, it's like, if, if you want to live at the intersection of these two, like, make sure you understand both who are the people consuming this information, what they need to be able to see, because it's not just the output. And also understand what you're signing up for.
Yeah, that's important. I, I've seen a lot of people get sucked into this. You know, the CFO wants work out of a data team that reports into product or CTO. And then, oh, well, we just need this report. We just need this thing. And then that's your job is to finagle all of that. But we'll, we also want to open it up here. People want to come on. I think, Mary, do you have the link in, in the comments or?
But in the comments, yep. To join us.
Yeah, if anyone wants to jump on and chat about this, you know, where is the line? How does this work? How does it not work? Uh, yeah, whatever your, whatever your opinions or thoughts are.
The other, while we wait for other people to join, I do think it's also interesting, like, I have my, I have opinions on data contracts, lots of opinions on data contracts. And in a lot of scenarios, I think they're overkill. But in a lot of, in some scenarios where you have to have productionized data, the person creating the data and the person consuming the data has to be on the same page about what the expectations are. And I think what a lot of people accidentally end up doing is they create some financial numbers and they, like, and this is where it's not just accounting. This is where like even just the basic financial metrics, where they create some metrics, ship them to the executive team. The executive seems like, wow, these are amazing. And then like one, one email later, that's going to a board of directors. And now there's this effectively inherent data contract between the board of directors or investors, the leadership of your company and your data team that says that directional is no longer okay. And now you're playing catch-up to get there because you're like, wait a second, I didn't realize that's what I had signed up for. And you have to play catch-up. So like, there's, there, it's, there's, it's expectation setting is unbelievably critical in this world. And, um, yeah.
Yeah, the, uh, the other thing is, uh, I think what you're, like, like, there's also different tolerances of all this. Like, I've worked at enough funny startups. Uh, I've looked over enough investor decks that I've been pitched to put money in on, on stuff. And I'm like, there's no way this makes sense. Like, see you later. Like, like, there's a difference as well between, uh, you know, what, uh, what types of companies we're talking about here. You know, related to how stringent things need to be or, uh, or how loosey-goosey they can be. But yeah, a few people have asked about joining. We have the link up in the.
We got it. Hi, David. Welcome.
Thank you.
Do you want to do a quick intro, David? Giantalake?
Giantalake, yeah.
Joining us from London or near London. So, yeah, you, you had some great comments in the, in the thread there.
Yeah, and David, uh, another founder in the space like Ethan, but I look after Delphi Labs with Michael Owen, another vibrant mafia-like person like Ethan. I worked for like a good long time in the data space. And throughout that time, I actually spent a lot of time working under like a finance director or CFO. And in that time as well, I, I ended up being like CPA equivalent. Just because at the time it was offered to me, but it was actually really, really helpful because you end up having to do this comparison. So a lot of the data I handled was like technically financed data the whole time. And I was always being judged against the ledgers and generals that the accountants would have. And so when I finally became one and I could take it apart and say, oh, right, this number is different just because you classify this cost differently to the way everyone else thinks about the business. Like, they had like six lines. They put everything in one of those six lines. And that's why you have a variance between the data and their numbers. But it's like so artificial. And you just have to, it really helps to like get your head around those things.
Do you recommend this to people or do you not? Like, like, who should go down this path? Who should not? When does it make sense? When does it matter?
If you think like you're going to set up that intersection between finance and data, definitely do it. If you think you're going to be, oh, I'm going to be in product analytics, like, no, don't do that. Maybe marketing, because they have to end up working a lot with finance as well, but probably not. That's what I, that's what I'd say.
Yeah, I think, I think what's interesting to me is like where, because like, everything, if you break it down as, uh, you know, a database or storage and compute and networking underneath all of it, right? Even a, even some kind of like accounting ledger or software, like, when we talk about making a ledger, like, and then comparing numbers against it elsewhere, like, what's the difference between, like, like, how did that ledger come to be? Like, because like, what, what my thing is, is if we're just recreating ledgers constantly and making a different version of it over here in one place, a different version in another, but we're using, you know, code in the software in one place, and then we're, you know, using SQL in a different place. Like, how, how, how does that kind of all work with like, uh, comparing the ledger, the official numbers, the, you know, the Pope-certified numbers versus somewhere else? What are, what are we comparing? And how much running around are, are we doing in many cases?
It's actually like often like what I used to see was quite horrible. So finance would get invoices. So like, this is some payments. They get invoices from Visa and Mastercard. And they would be like for really long weird periods. And then finance would kind of chop those numbers. They match their reporting periods and then put them into the journals and ledgers. And then I'd be asked to like, hey, get data that matches this number. And so I'd have to kind of, after a while, I'd learn what does that invoice actually mean? And what are they actually charging us for? And I'd have to kind of like duplicate that logic and apply it in our transactional data. And then calculate my idea of what the same cost should be. And like, sometimes it'd be very close, especially when it was like not particularly complicated. But as soon as it was complicated, you could end up quite far off.
So would you?
It's like, that's a different, it's a different chat. Oh, go ahead, Mary.
Oh, no, sorry. Is that, do you, what do you do then? You, you fudge it? You, you're close, close enough, which as Aaron, Ethan, as Ethan said, isn't good enough?
Like, you'd probably use them directionally. So like, the worst was like multi-currency foreign exchange stuff. That was always the worst. Yep. And so then like, you might be 10, 15% off every month. And so, but because you're always consistently off like that, then you, you just track that. And then if it really spikes, then you get a bit worried.
Go ahead.
I guess the other benefit of a lot, like, the benefit of using applications for this instead of using your internal headcount, when it comes to data headcount, is you could, like, there are applications that are entirely built for this. So if anything also does go wrong, not that you can say it's on someone else, but it's like, you can at least say it's not on you. So like, that, that's the other side of this, in my opinion, where it's like, there's stuff that finance teams have to do to what you're talking about, David. The question of like, taking on more than that and saying that you're going to try and put it into new technologies. Like, it's, it's, I think the risk of doing this type of stuff versus like, because the other thing is like, I saw someone recently say that they were doing this. They, they were creating a data stack to mirror their like closed process. And they were comparing the answers against the spreadsheets. And if they matched, they were correct. But it's one of those things where that only works if you don't shut down the spreadsheets. So like, like, once those spreadsheets are gone, like, then what are you comparing against? Like, then, then you're kind of just winging it and you're like, okay, cool. Did, did the data team actually do, do this correctly? So it's, it's not like you can get rid of the spreadsheets in that scenario unless you're 100,000% confident. So I, I think the risk here is something that's just very understated. And I think if you want to go down this route, what David's talking about here, it's like, it's kind of a different day job also. It's not like you're exploring the modern data stack tools and talking to all your friends about like their favorite SQL join. But it's like, like, you're, you're identifying transactions, making sure that they work. So it, it seems just fundamentally different.
My favorite join is the, is the anti-join. Uh, I wonder, I bet someone out there's got their entire accounting held together by the anti-join. If you know what that is, look it up.
I do not. I've heard right joins are very common in the accounting world.
So I think, I think, like, we have Lauren, who's extremely critical of this, Ethan, close to that, um, maybe somewhere more in the middle. David, who says there's reasons.
Sorry, Mary, go ahead.
No, no, but I guess, I guess when, when, I assumed, I think, what I'm getting from David is it's, sometimes there's reasons for this. Sometimes it can go right, but certainly not always. But when, when it does go wrong, because we all agree that it is going wrong in some places, what's driving that? Because I don't believe that it's the data teams driving it. Because we know that data teams aren't people who are pushy in that way, just by their personality. So is it the vendors that are driving this to happen?
I think it's the CFO who wants free labor and they don't want to put something on their P and L. And then they get stuff. And I've seen this multiple times is, uh, I, I've seen, um, you know, where Tableau report to Excel. And then, then it's, you know, fudged in Excel to close the books. After being exported out of Tableau, after going through all this SQL and stuff, that's what's holding everything together. And the CFO did not want to change it. And this is going through some kind of an audit process. This is at one of these roll-up companies, um, that, uh, you know, I'd worked at in the past. And, you know, all right, well, do we use Dynamics? Do we use a purpose-built thing? Right? And it's all a big negotiating game. Like, all right, well, we're not going to use Dynamics. We want our parent company to pay for that because we shouldn't be paying for it. And so, uh, you know, it just turns into a big game of, uh, of mucking around. And so I think, uh, I don't know, like, I'm not a, I'm always, I'm a very, I'm a very New York-y, pushy person. Ethan is too, in his own different way. Like, I don't, uh, you know, push back. I think people need to push back more on this because it just turns into, like, people just wasting their time in a lot of cases on stuff where, you know, should you really be doing any of this, uh, the way it's being done today? But also I'll let Ethan or David or anyone else chime in. But if anyone else wants to join, come on board. And also if anyone out there is, uh, like, no, y'all are full of it. I built everything. I built the warehouse native ERP system. That's interesting. Uh, you take the totally opposite position.
Yeah, I would love to.
Come on.
Yeah. I think, I think the, the biggest, it's not that this is a 100% don't do it type of problem. Like, inside of, if you ignore the rest of the company, if you have a CFO and the CFO has to allocate resources, ignoring everyone else inside the business, there's a balance of Excel people and data people that probably is more efficient than just hiring a bunch of Excel people. So like for a CFO that make, like, there is an allocation here that makes sense between these two. When you put the data person outside the finance org and they're accountable to the leadership of the company, where it's the CEO, the CFO, the CMO, the CRO, the CHRO, whoever, like, I think what people don't realize is you can find super high-value initiatives for those other divisions that are just orders of magnitude easier to actually accomplish than this. So it's like, finance has to deal with this. It is what they've signed up for. And inside of the finance org, allocating resources towards more technical resources makes sense in some scenarios. If you were a data person who has the opportunity to pick, that's when like, I would, until you run out of every potential other thing, I would find the high-value, low-effort stuff elsewhere in the, elsewhere in the company before, before venturing into this world.
That, that's like, I was going to come back on what Lauren is saying about why this happens. Says like another reason why this happens. And I saw this, is that this, that management are using finances' numbers. And they're great up until the point finances' numbers don't go any deeper. And then management are like, well, I want to see, well, you know, can I see our profit by like some random currency pair or some, something very granular? And then finance can't do it. They don't have the numbers. They just, then they like, well, we need data, we need you to do this. And then you have this problem where, well, how do you know it matches up with finance? Because they don't have that green. And then when they sum up all your stuff, it doesn't match what they've got. And then, yeah, this happens over and over again.
Yeah, absolutely. Well, look, I mean, like, you know, I, uh, we're talking about some interesting stuff here. There's a, this is a narrative that's developing and, uh.
I want to see the other side.
Go ahead. Yeah, I want to see the other side. I want, I want to have, and we'll have you on the show at some point in the next, I don't know, a week or two each or whatever, whenever. Like, I want to hear someone who built the warehouse native, uh, you know, everything is, you know, pure SQL, holding everything together. Because to me, that's insane. And maybe to other people it's insane. But if you did it, and you can talk to it, right? And, or you built it or something, uh, and, and, you know, you're okay to talk about it. That's interesting. Because there's so much of this stuff out there, um, that, uh, yeah, I, I'm very curious to see where this is going. And this is a narrative that's going to keep going. And in my opinion, like, I don't know, everyone has to find new workloads. If you're a product vendor, I think this is an interesting one that's coming out. I don't think it's a good thing, but you can think different and, you know, we'll have you on the show. And I think it's, I think a lot of this stuff's crazy out there with composable CDPs and going back. And, you know, maybe it's not that composable. Um, I don't know. We'll see. We'll see what happens. I'm, I'm having a good time with all this crazy, uh, crazy stuff out here. As Ethan knows, as Mary knows, and everybody.
Putting back on the marketing buzzwords and seeing, seeing what really makes sense, right?
Yeah, I mean, like, well, the other one here, like, there's a, there's a thing on this, like, I mean, uh, the high touch. And you used to, you know, work there, Mary, and we all know who they are, like, they're like, roll your own usage-based billing system. they're like roll your own usage-based billing system. Uh, but which I mean, like if you're, you know, using uh, if you're using and charging, if you're charging your customers, usage-based billing. So you know, you have IOT sensors or telemetry or something. You're collecting that, like, you know, you can roll it in Snowflake. Uh, and then you can use GPT to spit out invoices uh, through uh, through NetSuite. So you, you know, you put your data in Snowflake, then you use a GPT to uh, push out invoices to NetSuite. And I think that's crazy. And uh, I don't know. We'll see what happens.
Accounting and finance are big, big grown-up processes that require grown-up tools, right? And it's not your internal PLG motion and things that maybe there's room for experimentation and playing around on. These are things that, you know, you're accountable somehow, whether you're public or not, you're accountable to
Hello. Yeah.
A higher order. Right? Um, so yeah, no, absolutely fascinating. I know you have a hard out, Ethan, so I'll drop you out. Um, you too, David, and then uh, Lauren and I will wrap up. So thank you for coming on. You're welcome back anytime, uh, both of you.
Love it.
Take you out.
Thank you, Bill. Take care.
We, we dropped the bros out, uh, Lauren, and we can, we can, you and I can just wrap up here. Um,
Yeah, yeah. I think this is interesting. This is interesting. And uh, yeah.
By the way, tons of great comments. Um, there's too much for me to read them out loud. I mean, we can, but let's just continue the conversation in the comments. But may, I'm seeing that Robert Harmon might be the person. If I'm not.
Robert, Robert says, uh,
He's in favor of it.
Robert says, accounting and finance is where we were born as an industry. If we can't pull this off, then what are we doing? Yeah, interesting. That's a, you know, um, interesting take and I like that take. Uh, James Eichelberger says, I have a funny story about a dashboard that had been developed by someone else before me. Finance came to me and said that the numbers are off by 300K per day. Uh, so that's significant. Uh, and wanted us to fix. The funny part was that they said that it had always been 50K off per day. But now 300K a day was too much. And so we went and fixed that dashboard, but thought it was amusing. Yeah, no, that's interesting.
Great.
You know, you're, you're, you're $250,000 a day is where it's too far off a day. I don't know. It's all very funny. Uh, all this stuff and Val, um, problem with financial reports is they're aimed at finance to account for things by line item over a period. These entries are generally monthly, rolled up yearly in a summary. Using the data for planning is often not possible. So for a business planning, come up with logic to get through all drivers. We've never cracked this in the past. See, this is what I like about these types of things. Val says, we've never fully cracked this in the past. Robert says, our entire industry was actually born out of finance and accounting. Why can't we get this right? If we're, if we can't even get it right, then what are we even doing here? So I think it's an interesting conversation.
And I think it's, both, both are true. Like again, this is the type of stuff you can't mess around with. We shouldn't be experimenting on. You can't get it wrong. But also it's the fundamentals of data, finance data, basic numbers. Um, so I think this is just the start of a conversation to be, to be continued. Would you all say? Yeah. Great.
I'm excited. Well, we'll, we'll drop it off a little early today, uh, but there's more to come on this. It's been developing. And in my opinion, all the vendors need new workloads. They need to find new stuff to do. And finance is some untapped ground in a lot of cases. And uh, I'm sure we'll get tons of marketing about it. Uh, and we'll see what happens.
And consider this, yeah, the, 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 the start of the, the thought process. You need to be aware of some of the, the risks. Absolutely. Thanks to Ethan. Thanks to David for joining us. Um, everyone else is welcome in our next town hall. Every week is a potential town hall on Tech Bro Show if we wanted to.
Every week's a potential town.
And um, yeah, well, we'll see, see you all in the comments. Have a great weekend.
Take care. Bye.